Good evening. Welcome to our October 23rd workshop. John First is the village attorney. I see you on. We have about a 15-minute presentation from the local school district. If you, if you don't want to be, if you have other things you need to do for the next 15 minutes, we can text you when you're ready, if you'd like. But otherwise, we have with us tonight from Howland, Carl Avano, the interim superintendent, Dr. Peggy Clements, who is the president of the school board, high school principal Julia Sniffin. I've gotten accustomed to calling you Julia. And Megan Shields, who is the executive assistant to the administration. And they're going to talk to us and to the public joining us about the Howland Capital Plan. Take it away. And we have it. So that the public can see it as well.
Thank you. Mayor Foley did a little bit of my introductions already, so that's great. But just to introduce myself a little bit more in context of this project. I've been at Howland for 27 years. I've worked at all three buildings. I have one child who's graduated from Howland. I have one child who's currently a senior, and I also am a village resident. So to dive into the capital project, we started this project just under two years ago. And to start the project, we really did a lot of fact-finding and talking with the community, with teachers, with faculty, with staff, with students, with recent alumni, really thinking about what is it that we need to do? We knew we needed to do some work. We knew we needed to invest in the infrastructure on the inside, but we also knew that it was time to take a look at potentially some expansion. But looking at the structure of some of our buildings, they were really deteriorating, i.e. the Mabel Merritt Building in particular. And if you don't know what building that is, that's the Carriage House that's up to the right of the district office, if you're looking at campus. So we set out to do a campus master plan. And then we came back and we have this big, enormous, multi-year, multifaceted plan, realizing that it was not something that would be brought to the public all in one, that we were going to be fiscally responsible, we were going to prioritize our needs, and really just focus on the essential needs right now in order to put a bond forward. So with that, the essential needs fell into three categories. So you can go forward. Yeah, sorry about that. You can advance. So you can go one more. So they fell into three categories. And you can see the three categories here. Safety, infrastructure, and then programming. The safety, in terms of safety, we'll see some pictures as we move forward. But you were just talking about vestibules and entrances. You'll see some of that, talking about pedestrian and traffic flow on campus itself, ADA compliance. In the building, you'll see some pictures as it relates to phone systems. Our phone is still an analog system, believe it or not. Fire and carbon monoxide detectors. Some of these things came out of a building condition survey that was done quite a few years ago that we've been slowly chipping away at. But the referendum will allow us to dive into some more of those projects that were within the building condition survey. And then programming. When you look at the high school, the high school was built 20 years ago. Even when you think just about educational programming 20 years ago, it looks very different than it does today. And we really want to focus on that, too, obviously. Not just the infrastructure stuff that you don't see, but the stuff that really is going to enhance the learning and the opportunity for the students. So as we advance, you'll start to see some renderings. If you want to move two slides forward, you'll start to see some renderings of why this project is necessary. This picture shows the high school right now. Those two walls on either side and the doors there are already in existence. However, there is not a vestibule and a double-locking system. So right now at Howland High School, when you go to enter in, you enter into one set of doors, you enter into another set of doors, and then you check in. So you're already in the building when you check in. What we are proposing is that there will be a safety window in between the vestibule, so you can enter through one set of doors, still be buzzed in the one set, check in, and then buzz through the second set of doors in order to get into the building. That will also take place in the lower building. There is a small vestibule. You may have never realized it because the second doors are always open. But that second vestibule needs to be a little bit deeper into the main lobby of the main building. And there'll be the same structure setup, where there'll be a window, a secure area to check in. If you don't need to check in, you can drop off lunch. You can drop off the winter boots. You can drop off that stuff. And you don't ever even need to enter into the building. So you'll see some renderings of that as we move through the presentation. I did talk a little bit already about voice-over IP. That really, in terms of safety and security, needs to be upgraded. And that was in our initial, when we were looking at some of the improvements we needed to do. We've known that, and we've been working towards that.
Can we just keep Carol Flonansky's voice on the outgoing message?
Yeah. Is it Carol, or is it? Jessie.
It's Jessie.
Oh, it's Jessie?
Jessie.
It sounds like Carol.
Yeah.
Always makes me happy.
Yeah. So the picture on the left, if you've ever been in the PTA closet, that is our phone system. That is the analog phone system, where you connect one wire to the next wire, and it's all still hardwired through the building. It's open like that in the PTA closet. Obviously, that needs to be upgraded. What you see in the middle there is some corrosion coming off the boiler system. Needs to be upgraded. As Lillian mentioned, the picture on the right is the faculty bathroom, non-ADA compliant, in the elementary school. We have one staff bathroom in each building. So really, our staff, faculty and staff, are using the same facilities that our children are using, which is just not acceptable. So those are some of the things in terms of infrastructure and repairs and upgrades that are in this refer. As we talk about programming, we think about a few things. One, the Mabel Merritt Building itself is really not conducive to learning in the 21st century and the things that we're working to do. You can see a picture here. There's poles in the middle of the classroom, right, that are holding up the ceiling. Like, you can't take them down. You can't renovate it. The square footage within the classrooms doesn't meet the minimum requirement of square footage with New York State. Obviously, it's a grandfathered-in space. But when you're talking about doing projects and students working together, the quarters just don't, they don't fit. The students don't fit in that area. So also, Mabel Merritt is not ADA compliant. So if you have a child who is on crutches, if you have a child who's in a wheelchair, you have to build their schedule around making sure they're in ADA-compliant spaces. You can't just build a schedule. The other piece you'll see on the left, that is not a me finding students and asking them to sit in certain locations. That is the only rainy day we've had so far this year. And that's what the high school looks like on a rainy day. The freshmen eat in the cafeteria. The sophomores tend to eat in the high school building. Juniors and seniors also will eat in the high school building, or they'll leave campus for lunch. We don't have a space to house all of the high school students in one location in the main, in the main high school building. We would need to go to the lower building, and we would need to say to the elementary classes, "Okay, you can't use the auditorium now for PE because we have all our high school students in an assembly." Or we would have to use the cafeteria. We have no school gathering space in that building. So we are looking to do that as well. So we talked about the classrooms. STEAM, which is Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Mathematics, is an integrated program, right? Integrating those topics into certain classes that can be offered and taught. It might be that you are drawing up architectural plans, and you are putting them in CAD, and then you are constructing something with wood on the other side, with 3D printing. But putting in a STEAM lab up in that high school building that we currently do not have. Those of you who have had college students within like the last, I would say, seven years and gone to look at universities and colleges, you will see every single department has some form of a makerspace or some form of a STEAM lab. And recognizing that our students don't have the introductory into that work at Howland is something we really want to make sure we're bringing that programming to our students. This project also provides full air conditioning in the high school. The dockwork and everything in 2005 was put in for air conditioning. We just haven't been able to move forward with the funding to make that happen. We also know that New York State, right now, is in the process of passing a law that if any classroom is over 88 degrees, it is deemed not healthy for learning, and you need to close that classroom down. So we know that in September and in June, we have many classrooms that hit 88 degrees. So this will prevent that from happening. And it's not just about the high school. Yes, it provides air conditioning in the high school, but the lower building does have air conditioning in the auditorium. The spaces that will be renovated in the main building will also have air conditioning. It doesn't air condition the entire lower building, but it does provide quite a few spaces that if needed, we could come up with a schedule or a system to ensure that we wouldn't have to close on days, unless it's 120 degrees. You know, we're really in bad shape, but we should be able to maintain with the air conditioning that's being put in. We talked a lot about the Multi-Use Student Center for Lunch, but we have what's called a unit lunch period, which is amazing for a small school like Howland. When you have clubs and you have activities, if you have lunch all at the same time, you can have those clubs and activities meeting during lunchtime. And our students tend to do multiple things. So they play sports, or they're in the play, or they don't have the time after school to stay for a club because they want to do something else. This provides a great meeting space for those clubs to get together. It provides a space for the students to socialize. You know, we see all the research about student socialization these days and ensuring that we're providing that space for that to happen. And I really do believe, when you see this rendering, you'll see that that is definitely a positive. Awards nights, guest speakers, musical performances, you know, community events. There's a lot of things that this space could be used for. We're a village school. You know, we have things happening in multiple places. Another huge part that you'll see in the rendering is a student wellness and support services suite. Right now, we have a social worker and a guidance counselor that are both working out of internal offices that used to be faculty bathrooms. So they're converted into office space. They were bathrooms. That's why we don't have staff bathrooms. And we're really focusing on the wellness of our students. And we've brought in an additional guidance counselor. We've brought in a full-time school psychologist, which is great. We recognize our students need the supports, but we don't have the place to put them. So now we're putting them in non-ideal locations to provide services. If we could get our service providers together in one common area, they could be working together to support the students in the necessary ways that they should be. And in the lower building, not only is it the high school's guidance and psychologists and social workers and athletic director, but in the lower building, you see those related service providers are spread out all over the place. The speech therapists, the OT, the PT, again, a social worker and a behaviorist. Some of those tend to be more primary services than secondary services. Doesn't mean that a secondary student doesn't receive speech or have a behaviorist, but they tend to be, their schedules are much heavier in the elementary schools. And they, too, would have a suite center in the main building. And again, you'll see that rendering as we move forward. So this is the proposed rendering of the high school addition. So you'll see that long, flat roof area over to what is the multipurpose kind of cafeterium, cold grab-and-go area. It won't be a hot service line. It would be cold, grab-and-go. The first floor of that addition is the guidance suite area. The second floor is classrooms. On the backside of the first floor is the STEAM area. And then upstairs on the backside is another classroom and the art room. If you know the high school, right now, art is in the lower building. And world language is in the Mabel Merritt Building. So what this does, if you go to the next slide, you see those four light blue classrooms. So those are state-approved sizes for classrooms without poles in the middle. So you bring your world language department into your high school. The turquoise blue on the right is your art classroom. So you bring your art class into your high school. On the bottom floor, the orange is that suite of service providers. And on the backside is the STEAM room. So on the left, you have the drawing, design, planning. And then on the right, that's kind of what they call it, like the dirty room, where you might be working with laser printers. You might be working with 3D printing. You might be working with, it might be a day the printers are in the storage area and the woodworking would be happening, depending on what's happening. You know, what's going on, what class is meeting at that time. There is one level to the multipurpose room, but there are risers. And as we go to the next rendering, you'll see that. There were three conference rooms. You may have noticed them. They were pink. There's three conference rooms as well. Currently, there is zero conference rooms in the high school. So if you want to have a meeting with me in my office, which is the size of the table, we sit very close to one another. The other piece about, that I should have mentioned, I forgot, is that the guidance office is also in the high school office right now. So my office is in one spot, and the 910 guidance counselor is right next to me. So when the guidance counselor is meeting with a student in crisis or a student who's working on their college essay or a scholarship, or just wanting to look at next year's schedule, and I'm potentially dealing with a discipline issue, highly confidential student in crisis that I need to manage, we're all in one space. So there's very little confidentiality. So here you see the steps that, if you hear Sam Sauer ever speak, he is just so happy
On the video.
To have this as a place for acapella to perform, quartets, performance during the day, at lunch, at night, you know, bringing people in to hear small groups perform. Might not be big enough for the band, but would potentially be large enough for the chorus.
But maybe a soloist.
But maybe a soloist or two. Maybe an Allstate soloist. I don't know. So that area, definitely, we see being used if we had a guest presenter, a guest speaker. Right now, we bring guest speakers in. We take one of the math classrooms that's larger. We pack it with students, and we turn students away because we just don't have the space to do it. And again, if we were to do it in the lower building, we would be canceling PE classes. We would be canceling music classes. We would be canceling something to have high school, when high school would need a larger space. The other side is portable furniture. I think you saw that. This is the STEAM area. This is the clean side, where there would be instruction, computers, where students could be designing projects. And then you see the glass wall. And on the other side would be the work area. On the other side of that is storage. The administration is really working right now on defining what type of programming we would have in the STEAM area. We just did a visit a couple weeks ago and really started generating some great ideas and thoughts about this. And I think you're going to hear more about the STEAM and innovation area once this passes. So this is the lower building. I mentioned about the service providers in the lower building being spread out all over the place. Right now, our SRO is staged right down towards like where the tunnel is on that level. We want to bring our SRO up to front and center, right in that pink area, where there's three lines of sight. One directly out to the center of the campus, one in that breezeway, that two-door entrance way. So if you're, if you're looking at this, the front door is yellow, right? You see, they expanded the two doors. You see, to the right there is where the check-in would be, that small in the yellow, that's the check-in. The top, small, pink office, yep, is the SRO's office. So he would be right there, able to see to the hallway, to see outside, and to see into the entrance. Then you have the middle school principal's office. And then all of that orange are the service providers. You have E&amp;L, you have speech and language, you have the behaviorists, you have counselors. Did I hit everybody?
OTPT.
OTPT is on the right.
So just for orientation, how far back in what we know of today is that last orange?
So that's the two classrooms that are there. So the pink is really the nurse's office. And then the next classroom, right now, I believe, is Ms. Lamond's. And then the next classroom is Ms. Wiles. So it's taking those two classrooms out.
To the more.
It's actually to the
Sorry, check this out.
Toward the library.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right now, our E&amp;L services are in a classroom, also with the technology break-fix area. So there's partial walls put up. They don't go all the way to the ceiling. And they have two spaces, the break fixes on the other side. So it takes them and it puts them in confidential areas, quiet areas, areas where there's no disturbances. But you then will regain a classroom as we move those people up. Our speech and language right now is in a broken-up classroom near Ms. Jammin's office. And the same thing. Those walls do go all the way up to the ceiling, but they're very thin. There's a lot of disruption. The photocopy machine is right there. So that will take all of that out, and that will make that another full classroom. So we're not losing classroom space. We're just reallocating the spaces and allowing it to make sense instructionally. If you look at the bottom, that is actually when you walk in the front door now to the right. So what is the middle school principal's office now? So that will become the full conference room when you first walk in. That'll be the largest conference room in the district. The purple is the nurse's office. And then you have three ADA-compliant bathrooms for staff in that building. And then we have money, and I sit down.
Yeah, absolutely. Cover this segment of it. Be mindful of time, but we're happy to take questions afterwards. So total cost of the project is $28,359,948. Basically, the district has saved $1 million in a capital reserve that will be applied to this project. That'll bring the cost down by a million. We do receive state aid. Our building aid is 35%. The way state aid works is for renovation, they will provide state aid over a 15-year period for new construction. Or like an addition on the high school, that would be over 20 years. So we intend to borrow some of the bonds. Would be 15-year bonds, some 20-year bonds to take advantage of all aidable portions of this project. Then the local share, which is what we're asking the public to consider approving, will be $27.4 million, which will come from the taxpayers. And if you advance one more slide, we're offering a breakdown of the cost to property owners. So on the left-hand column, you will see a property valued starting at $300,000, $500,000, $750,000, or $1 million. And what this project will take between three and four years to complete. So from the time of November 19th, if this is approved by the voters, we expect definitely within four years, it will be complete, maybe a bit sooner. So we intend to borrow in stages. We don't need to borrow all the money upfront. We can do something called bond anticipation notes initially. We can use that $1 million in capital reserve for some of the beginning projects. Some things would happen immediately, like Julia talked about the end-of-life fire alarm system, carbon monoxide system, the phones that are really a safety need of the district. And these systems are all an end-of-life. We think we could start on those right away. Something like the new construction on the high school will, you know, probably start in year two. So the, yeah, if you want to just, you know, the cost, you know, again, let's take a half-a-million-dollar property. The tax increase would be $158 per year for three consecutive years. So the total increase after three years, once the project is completed, would be 6.95%.
That's really helpful for the public to see. Thank you for laying it out that way.
Yes, you're welcome. And our final slide. Basically, this is all part of our effort to really communicate about this project. It's complicated, as Julia explained, all those various components. But we do believe it's really important for the future of the district and to give our students the quality education that we believe they deserve. So this is one thing. We have a website that has great information. We're posting one video per week, just showing different aspects of the project because we believe showing it is a lot more effective than just having it in print or speaking to it. So the videos really give you an insider's look. In addition to that, we're offering tours at our board meetings. We're doing Q&amp;A and sessions before board meetings. And all of this information can be found on the website. We will also have a newsletter, very much like our budget newsletter, that will go out to every community member in our school district. And it will outline all of this information, including the finances. So with that, I know you do have a follow-up presentation, but we would be happy to take questions now or even at a later time.
I have two quick questions. With the, this slide and the costs, and the 35% is received back on the $1 million that is spent, not on the total project, right?
No, it is on the total project, but certain aspects, not every dollar spent is aidable.
Okay. And then the $27.4 million that has to be paid by taxpayers, that's including the interest on the bonds, I assume? Because the numbers, I'm trying to be cutting them off.
Well, the $28.4 million is the cost of the project.
Right.
So the district has $1 million in funds, which leaves $27.4.
Okay.
So that's what it will cost after four years, when, once that project is complete. As far as borrowing, you raise an interesting question. It's a, these are projections right now. So we're looking at current interest rates. As you probably know, the Federal Reserve last month dropped their benchmark rate by a half percent. So we saw a bit of a dip in our borrowing cost. So right now, our interest, we project, would be 2.32% per year, for three years, a total of 6.95. We're hoping that would be lower. The Fed is projecting that they will continue to lower rates in the year ahead. So that could be less, but we have to work with the numbers we have currently. Does that answer?
Yes. It does. I'm still not sure how the 35% gets factored in there.
Because the 35% is aid that comes back to the district.
Right.
So that basically indirectly will benefit taxpayers because you will be getting 35% back, not on the full $28.4 million, but on the majority of the money spent.
Okay.
So that's a, you know, pretty decent
And then, I lied, there were four questions. So, and then the tax increases? Like, how long do you project those to remain? Through the life of the bonds, or?
Through the life of the bonds, is the answer there. So again, portions will be 15-year bonds, and other portions will be 20. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? This is the first time I've seen that presentation. I'm really happy to see it and happy to see all of the ways that you're thinking about students' welfare and capacity to do great things at Howland. So thank you for coming in. And we have on the screen now the ways that you can get in touch with folks at Howland if you have follow-up questions. And we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thursday, November 19.
Tuesday, November 19.
Yes.
Oh, so it's separate from Election Day. That's important.
It gets to warm up for the 7 to 9 at the elementary library.
They vote absentee, and you can get an early ballot.
And how do people do that?
On the website. On your, through the website. Yeah, the school website.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you. Good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Okay. So now we will Okay, so now we will admit we have O I C Jackson with us. So now we'll move into our regular agenda. Um, first announcements, um. Yardways, put it out tonight, we'll pick up tomorrow. Um, a reminder that the Halloween parade is this weekend. Gather at Saint Mary's lawn at four thirty for step off at five. Parade down Main Street. Any other announcements? Okay. Um, next is opportunity to request to vote to add or modify an agenda. Um, I would like to make a motion to um add Cold Spring, the Cold Spring a Glow request from the Chamber of Commerce. We left that off. And also we have thank you to um trustee Starbuck and trustee uh Primark for coming in today and signing vouchers. I'd like to add uh payment of vouchers.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to add um and attach a copy of the H H F T letter dated October tenth, twenty twenty four. The agenda with the discussion on how to respond to their request to begin discussions. To find ways in which H H F T might contribute to solutions to existing conditions before the first phase of the project is completed.
I'm sorry, you're asking for what tonight?
To add, attach a copy of the letter.
What letter?
The H H F T letter dated October tenth.
Okay.
Twenty twenty four. To the agenda and the minutes with a discussion on how to respond to their request. To begin discussions to find ways in which H H F T might contribute. To solutions to existing conditions before the first phase of the project is completed.
Is there a second?
A second?
Discussion?
So just to clarify again, you just, you want to add the letter to the. Functionally, what will be the minutes that go out as public record after this meeting? Is that correct?
And to the agenda that's posted, to update the agenda that's posted now.
This agenda that we have in front of us.
That's right.
That, so the update on the agenda would be that we added.
The letter.
The letter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, God, another clarification. I'm fine with adding it, attaching it to the, um, to the meeting, um, and providing to the public. But are you also asking, I'm not in a position to have a discussion about it tonight. Are you also requesting to discuss the letter tonight?
Um, I, I would like us just to recognize that they're asking for a meeting. To discuss ways in which they can contribute to solutions to existing conditions. Before the first phase of the project is completed, which is in their letter.
I'm willing to add the letter to the record. It's already a public document. It's already been covered in the press. I'm not prepared for a discussion tonight. I do want to address the points that are in the letter, but I'm not prepared to do that tonight. So, tweaks?
I am not prepared to do that tonight. I do however agree that we can add the letter to, to the agenda. And as addendum to the minutes when we publish those.
Okay, so would you, it sounds like you have.
Modify the motion to include the letter to, with the, as an addendum to our agenda and in the minutes for the meeting.
Okay, um, a clarification for the clerk. Do we modify, when we add? How do we normally handle the, the agenda, the final agenda if we've added at the meeting?
I would add the backup adopt, backup attachments.
To the minutes. Do you modify the agenda? I don't think we normally do that.
I wouldn't normally.
Yeah.
The minutes are so far behind at this point. I just think it should be there as soon as possible. So if it could be added to the agenda, I would appreciate that. That would be my request.
I'm just concerned that we follow standard practice. And if we don't normally amend, amend an agenda, I would not recommend that.
I, I haven't done it previously. It would be a deviation from the norm. I, I can't add it to the minutes though, and I'm actively working.
And of course, the letter is, it is public record. It was sent to the members of all three village boards. It's certainly foilable. Um, so it's, you know, it's a public document, but I don't, we don't normally change the agenda. So if, so let's, so we'll take your first motion or your second, your modified motion. You're asking to. Add it to the minutes and add it to the agenda, correct?
Yes.
And that is all that you're asking in this, that's what we're voting on right now?
Correct.
Okay, so uh Eliza has made the motion. Aaron has made a second um to add to the agenda and to the minutes. Um, I, with this, with the notation, this is not standard practice. I'm happy to have it in the minutes. Um, so votes.
Aye.
Vote is to add it to.
Agenda and minutes. That's what she's asking.
I'm happy to add it to the minutes, question on minutes, where you noted that the, we were behind in minutes.
Yeah.
How far behind are we in minutes?
We are up to June, so we are about three months behind.
Okay.
Yeah, they haven't.
They were first catching up from the backlog of the previous clerk going out of office?
Uh, my concern is that this discussion, this request that H H F T has sent us to have this discussion in person. To talk about mitigation measures that might affect us now, doesn't happen in three months.
So I, I'm happy to address that. Um, Rebecca Ramirez staffed to the H H F T. Stood in a public session the last time we all talked about Fjord and she offered to hold a workshop at the board. This letter is not about holding a workshop. It's about, it's about the pause and the, and the agreement around the pause. I am happy if you would like to come in and make a workshop, to schedule a workshop, but we haven't received correspondence from you on that.
This letter actually asks for a meeting.
There is not a reason, it's not, it's not, I'm asking for a workshop with this board. If Rebecca would like to have a workshop, she's welcome to ask. We have not received correspondence. I am happy to invite you to come for a workshop. Excuse me, I'm, I'm speaking right now. I'm happy to add it, to invite them for a workshop. And it, and ask for follow up on what you said in public, but I am not in favor of modifying the agenda. That is not what we normally do.
We modify the agenda all the time.
We do not modify an agenda post, we do not ma- modify an agenda post the meeting. It's on the record as it was posted and then the minutes are the reflection. Is that correct, clerk?
Typically.
So I'm not, I'm saying, I am voting no to the request to modify the agenda. I'm happy to have as part of the minutes. And I'm also happy to have Rebecca send an actual request for a workshop.
I don't think that it being in a, you know, in fairness, I don't think the fact that it's added to the minutes means that we can't have a discussion.
That's right.
Soon.
I hope that's the case.
I don't think there's any reason that, I, I don't see those two as being connected. So if we, if it is not our normal practice to, to modify the agenda after the fact. We're adding it to the minutes. We're noting, we're, we are gleefully awaiting a request to have a meeting in the meantime. We will add it to the minutes. I think that's a totally fair.
Request be made now? I, can you do? One, you can send an email to the clerk. That's the normal practice. Yeah, Laura, I'd like to hear from Laura. I'd like to do the Laura. Um, I'm calling, I'm recognizing Laura right now. I haven't heard from her yet.
Uh. I don't, I mean, I just feel like there's a lot of like ranker on them and, um. Certainly, like it wasn't added to the agenda, but now we're having like a full fledged discussion on it.
Right.
Um, and, uh, so I guess I, I don't. I think that it would, it is, like the ultimate goal that I think we're getting to is that we have this workshop. And it sounds like we now have like made a verbal process that we will have it. And I think that that's a good thing. And, um, and, and I, and I, and I think that like, fine, so we have a process and we need to keep. Like stick with that process on, um, how we deal with the agendas. Um.
So I think we've got some really important things to deal with tonight that are like emergency, you know, like public safety, important issues. Um, and I, my preference would be that we just like take this vote and move on. Um, I'm in favor of. Um, adding it to the minutes. I hope that, um, things calm down for Greg and he can, um, uh, move forward with the minutes too. And then we can move on with our reading. Okay, so you have voted yes, you have voted.
I would like to say something.
You can as soon as I'm clear on what we're talking about. One second. I'm not ignoring you, Aaron. It's not always about you. So Eliza has said yes, and you had said that you.
Okay, stop. Let's just have our conversation and it's not personal.
I want to understand what I have heard. Eliza has said yes. You have said.
Add it to the.
The minutes.
Right.
You have said add it to the minute. So it is a no on the overall request, but a yes to the minute. Go ahead.
Thank you, Becky.
You're welcome.
I'd just like to acknowledge that we have received a written invitation from the H H F T. All of us received it from October tenth. Can we acknowledge that?
Absolutely, and.
That was acknowledged last week, actually.
Last week. It was acknowledged before that via email when I ex, responded in a public exchange in a, in a government email. Received, they had been received. Received, received. What's been happening in the week since? And we're going to spend one minute on this because we do actually have legitimate public safety issues to address tonight. Is that we have been running the village and the Fjord Trail. We have heard nothing from the Fjord Trail, but for the advocacy. From the mouthpieces sitting at the end of the table. So Rebecca, put in a request for workshop. We will be very happy to have it. I would like to hear from, I would like to hear more about the construction that's laid out in the letter to understand better. Um, why, why, uh, the, the bottom portion from Dockside to Little Stony Point cannot be done at the same time. So I hope that when you do come to, to a workshop, you can have folks with you who can speak to that, those particular. So the, um, the details of, of construction. Okay? That'd be amazing.
That would be great. I just want to make sure that it's not public comment time. What, what is? I was just gonna say that it would be great to also hear from other trustees what clarifications they would want as well.
We can do that by email. We're not spending time on Fjord tonight. We are talking about a public safety issue tonight. Excuse me, Aaron. We have other issues to deal with. This is not.
Mouthpieces. By the mayor.
Next agenda item.
Talk to me about decorum.
Alyssa, I'm trying to maintain decorum. You are pushing something forward which is not a priority for this meeting and is not on the agenda. You asked, we approved to add it to the minutes. We are moving on. We're paying the village attorney to sit here and we're paying O I C Jackson to sit here. So moving on, I would like to make a motion to enter executive session to discuss matters that will imperil public safety if disclosed and to seek advice of counsel. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. So we will ask the public to leave the room and Hillary and, and Michael, um, and Larry Burke. Um, sorry, Larry, you're just a member of the public now, when you come to meetings. Um. Will disconnect each for spending a little longer.
Okay, you guys still want me to hang around or you're good on the resolution?
Good.
We've got that changed.
Okay. All right, have a good night.
Have a good night. Okay, so. He's going to get.
No, 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 my, oh, no, sorry. For, yeah, holding, yeah, holding themselves together out in the hallway.
Do you have people coming in?
Yes, I did. One left.
She's still standing. Come on in.
Okay, so it is, uh, just about nine o'clock. Um, we are coming out of executive session. Um, Alyssa Starbuck made a motion to exit executive session. Tweeps Phillips Woods seconded and we all voted in favor to come out. So I would like to take a moment on behalf of the board to address the events of this past Saturday in the village. Our job as trustees and my job as mayor is to make sure that we put the safety and health of our residents first and foremost. That is always our main concern and it's the most important part of our job. We are fortunate to have an amazing staff, volunteer firefighters, ambulance corps and a police department that are all responsive. Courteous and up to every challenge put before them. On Saturday, as is always the case on beautiful October weekends, our streets were filled to the brim with visitors and residents alike. Vehicular and pedestrian movements were slow and hazardous. In the mid afternoon, a caravan of vehicles went through our village, traveling from a rally in the county seat. The village's streets are public. The individuals in the caravan were within their rights to travel through Cold Spring. No permit was required. That said, and very unfortunately, the village's emergency services and particularly our police department. Did not receive notification from the Putnam County Sheriff or from the Phillips Town residents who took part in the caravan. While the sheriff may not have known the intended route of the caravan, for the sake of public safety. His office should have alerted all Putnam County law enforcement agencies to be at the ready for the passage of a large number of vehicles. Ranging in size from sedans to utility trucks. This vital information could have helped the Cold Spring Police Department to prepare, ensuring adequate presence to move the traffic through quickly and without event. A fair degree of chaos ensued on our packed streets and sidewalks and our police were taken unawares. When called, the sheriff's department deputies on the road responded in mutual aid, as did the New York State Police. For this, we are immensely grateful to the rank and file. Thankfully, no one was hurt and our officers managed the situation with professionalism and safety. These are complicated times and emotions are heated on just about every level. Um, still, as a village, we will do everything possible to avoid situations that potentially put people's lives and safety at risk. As we look forward to the next couple of busy weeks, we will be implementing changes to vehicular traffic pattern. We're gonna have a resolution about that in a moment. We will have more police present. We will make every effort to ensure that all public gatherings are as safe as they are fun for our community. I will say this again, so it's crystal clear. We will not be in a situation where people feel unsafe or insecure on our streets and in our community. This is our home. We're neighbors, we're friends. We live together in a small environment and we must all do our best to remember that. As there are ongoing investigations into the events of Saturday, I'm not going to go any further detail on that. While we do not condone belligerent behavior, intimidation or threats of any kind to our staff, our police officers. To our neighbors or toward our visitors, we will work to maintain peace and order at all times. So, thank you. We have been in discussion with the, the village attorney and the officer in charge. Related to, um, recommended modifications to, um, parking on the weekends, only on the weekends. Friday, Saturday and Sunday, um, for a temporary period of time. Um, would someone like to make resolution thirty three dash twenty twenty four?
I will. Resolution thirty three, twenty twenty four, authorizing the officer in charge to suspend on-street parking and divert traffic. Whereas the village of Cold Spring has been inundated with an increasingly growing number of tourists through the fall peak visitor season. Whereas the extremely large crowds and the increased traffic associated with these weekend crowds has, in the opinion of the village's officer in charge. Made it extremely difficult to manage and control traffic and respond to emergency safety in the village. Whereas the village board and its police department have an inherent duty to protect the general health, safety and welfare of the village's residents and visitors. Whereas the officer in charge requests the authority to temporarily implement the following. In order to better manage the extremely large, peaking crowds during the remainder of the fall. One, suspend on-street parking on Fair Street on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays at all times. Two, suspend on-street parking on the north slash west side of Nor- of Northern Avenue. Between Church Street and ninety on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays at all times. Three, to defer traffic as needed. Whereas these temporary measures will create one set of both street options for the police department. Now, our first responders should, emergency response be necessary in high traffic areas. This hereby resolved, that the O I C is authorized to divert traffic from Main Street to Fair Street. If deemed necessary to create a safer traffic environment for the following date. October twenty five to twenty seven of twenty twenty four, November one to three, eight to eleven, five to seventeen. And twenty two to twenty four of twenty twenty four. And be it further resolved that the O I C is hereby authorized to, to suspend on-street parking on Fair Street, Northern Avenue. So long as the proper signage notifies residents of no parking at least twenty four hours before for the following date. October twenty five to twenty seven of twenty twenty four, November one to three, eight to eleven, fifteen to seventeen and twenty two to twenty four of twenty twenty four. And further resolves that this, that this authority shall take effect on October twenty third, twenty twenty four.
That did not reflect the modifications that we had go.
No, I said church. Oh, I'm sorry. I said it on the fourth paragraph between church and ninety. Um.
So why don't you reread it's item two, so it's clear on the record.
So it's, um, hereby authorized to suspend on-street parking on Fair Street and Northern avenues. Um, on the northern, on the north slash westbound side between church and ninety. Is that okay?
And then the, at the end, be it further resolved. And then the, at the end, be it further resolved that the OIC is hereby authorized to suspend on-street parking on Fair Street and the north side.
That's what I just said.
She did say it in the.
Okay.
So there's only two.
To be amended in both places.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. So I had, I had it in the first one. It needs to be in the second one. The Northern Avenue needs to reflect the specificity that is just on the northern side between church and ninety. Right, so for clarity in the public record, the reference to Northern Avenue is the north slash westbound side of Northern Avenue between ninety and Church Street. And the clerk will modify before release to the public to make sure that the resolution reflects that modification.
On the roll call.
Uh, well, I don't think we have a second yet. So Eliza has seconded. And it is a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, trustee Starbuck.
Aye.
Trustee Phillips Woods.
Aye.
Trustee Bozey.
Aye.
Trustee Primark. Mayor Polley.
Aye.
All is having.
Thank you very much, and thank you everyone for putting in the time to have that. So it got out. And Mike, we can make sure that you have a copy for clarity. Um, okay, moving into forward business. So Matt is having, Matt is having a month. So Matt Crew, Matt Crew, water superintendent of water and wastewater. OIC is all. All the Mads are having a month. So there was a call from a resident at Six Garden Street because they were having pressure issues. And Matt recommends that the issue, the issue on a fuller section of the street be addressed, so we're not shifting the pressure issue from one location to another. That's my layperson's interpretation. Any clarification that you think you need to add to what I've explained?
No, that's, that's clear enough.
In Wayne's terms. And the cost of doing that is eight thousand five thirty-one. You know, we, in light of, of this one popping up, when Matt does come back to us about the other ballot repair, remember where we were trying to purchase in bulk, to purchase less. We're gonna have to look and see if we're able to do that bulk purchase on the next one. This one's emergent, we have to deal with it.
Clearly, it's on our side of the, you know, within our side of the haze for.
Correct.
What, what on our, on our.
Right, the, the portion that was, yeah, as, as I understand it, the, the, any portion that was on the, the resident's side has been dealt with on that side. Um, any other discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Ross valve and faction quote for the water department.
And it is a single source quote, eight thousand five hundred and thirty-one. Is it second? Second, in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And this one, the next one, I'm very happy to bring forward. This is, seconds of a bid for our ARPA project. So we are meeting the deadline to be able to collect the ARPA money and put forward by the county and to encumber our portion to meet our own deadline, our own federal deadlines. So Han, we had, we modified the bid. Remember last time, we, it was way higher than we expected it to be, so we modified the bid to a smaller scope. And the bids landed in the range we can afford and which are covered by the cost of, mostly by the cost of the ARPA money. Let's see. I, he had a particular comment. The low bidder for this project is Songar. However, they've been unable to provide responsive and satisfactory references. They provide only one previous project where they have performed tank coatings. As a result, we are hesitant to recommend Songar contracting. The second lower bidder, Gallo Construction Corp., has submitted a responsive bid with satisfactory work references as required and has been successful in completing the similar process. So basically, they're recommending that we go with our best value clause under procurement and choose the second lowest bid from Gallo. Discussion.
The regulation.
Yeah, okay, would you like to make the?
Make a motion to accept the bid from Gallo Construction Corp. For water tank coating and replacement of water treatment media in the village of Cold Spring.
And we actually have a resolution, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
I guess I'll make a resolution. Uh, number thirty-four, twenty twenty-four, accepting the bid for replacement of water treatment media. The following resolution is offered by myself, trustee Starbuck, for adoption and seconded by.
Mesa.
The trustee, Treep Phillips Woods, to wit, whereas on September eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the village issued requests, a request for bid, RFP, for the removing and replacing of clarifier and filter media and recoding of water treatment tanks at the village water treatment plant. And whereas five bids were received with Gallo Construction Corp. submitting the best value bid. Therefore, it is, it is hereby resolved that the village awards the bid for the replacement of water treatment media and tank recoding at the cost of four hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars to Gallo Construction Corp. on roll call vote.
Trustee Starbuck.
Aye.
Trustee Phillips Woods.
Aye.
Trustee Bozey. Trustee Primark.
Aye.
Mayor Polley.
Aye, thank you very much.
You have it.
Um, next, we did have a discussion of short-term rental code update, but we are waiting feedback from the village attorney. And honestly, at nine o'clock, I don't think anybody is prepared to have a discussion, so I would make a motion to table. Second. Last is the approval of a glow. I'm really excited about this one. Oh, well, let's do a glow first because it's more exciting.
Yeah.
The chamber and recreation commission are working, thank you, working together this year to host a glow and the tree lighting on the same night, which I think is great. It will bring better attendance to both events. Um, and they're asking, they have already gone to Rec, Rec is on board. We have a recommendation from the chair. They're asking for Sunday, December eighth, and obviously, they're coordinating with the fire company. Part of the parade, yeah, exactly. So, any discussion?
I'm sad there's no candles. But it's really great that they're coordinating it with the tree lighting, which always aids to make.
Perfect sense, yeah, I think it's great.
I missed that.
Oh, they're, they're proposing to not include, include the live flame.
Flame luminaria.
The battery ones that flicker like. Oh, okay, I just was trying to figure out how it's going to be a glow without any glow, but it's going to be the plastic glow. Yeah. Okay, I understand, that's gonna be a flame, got it. Which is actually easier for, I mean, it's, it's, it's a different kind of beautiful, but it's also easier for the volunteers. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for Cold Spring a Glow on Sunday, December eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Thank you, chamber, thank you, rec. motion. Phillips.
We make a motion to approve that seven, five, eight, eight for the amount of forty thousand three hundred eight dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second. No favor?
Aye.
Um, before we adjourn, we got asked before we went into executive session about trustee, other trustees who have questions to put them forward. So if we can send them to the clerk and have the clerk, everybody's individual questions and have them compiled and we can submit them in advance of the session, so everybody has time to prepare and we can read each other's questions.
Right.
Sound good? Um, let us know about calendar, am I gonna do a calendar tonight? Let us know what, let us know what works, because you've got, obviously, you've got to do a construction.
We're gonna.
Yeah, sounds good. Made use of the time, right? Thank you.
Mike started his question.
Uh, yes, Mike.
So I just, I'm hoping you can clarify why an executive session was needed to discuss the events of Saturday, since discussing the events would not endanger public safety.
Well, I can't really answer that question without revealing, revealing why. You're welcome to contact the village attorney if you want further clarification, but I can't answer that question without.
Okay, I will, thank you.
Okay. Um, anything else? Motion to adjourn? If I did, in favor?
All right.
Thank you, Rebecca.